To order for Tuesday, September 28th. Roll call, please.
President Kadaski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Kobaki.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember the men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. I need approval of the open and closed minutes from August 24th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to speak for items not on the agenda? State your name and address, please.
Steve Dorvinnan, 1510 Cardinal Lane, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm coming before the board tonight to discuss an issue that we're seeing widespread in the communities around this area, and it's the use of TIF money to fund projects. Where years ago, TIF money sponsored projects for local people, for local workers to get benefits. We're starting to see a disturbing trend in the area of out-of-the-area developers coming in and then hiring out-of-the-area or out-of-the-state contractors to perform the work on these projects. We think it'd be a wise investment for community dollars to go to a local workforce, to keep the local money local for local people to work on local projects because they live here year-round and they spend money here year-round. They do not come in for a job and leave.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll take note of all of that and internally discuss it. Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Craig Burnett. I live at 1410 Orlando, just up the hill. Been in the village for over 30 years and, like I say, I always voted yes on all the referendums for schools and whatnot. Worked with Tracy putting some playgrounds in 20-plus years ago and would just like to see that all the nice, good jobs stay local rather than out-of-state.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything?
Hi. My name is Jason Roach.
Hold the mic up to you, please, so we can hear you.
My name is Jason Roach, 2265 Prairie Street. I would just simply like to ask what we could do in the future to ensure that local contractors are here to work on these local projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Cameron Dufano, 845 Spruce Street. I'm a carpenter's apprentice and I've been working here locally for a long time now. And I'd just like to know how we can keep that local, obviously, because I'd like to stay working in the area. It's my livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Jacobs. I live at 4661 Weary Road, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And I would just like to know, what do we require from developers to make sure they hire reputable contractors that follow state and federal laws? And kind of the second part to that is if they find, if the board finds out that some of the contractors are not following those, what do they do to help correct that situation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Number seven, oath of office for our new officer. Adam. Adam, you are in there. There you are.
Okay. Adam, come on up. Want to make you stand here while I talk about you for a little bit. Thank you to the board for allowing us to do this. Just a little bit about Adam. Adam is our newest officer hired on September 13th of this year. Adam went to the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, graduated with a bachelor's science degree. Shortly after that, he immediately joined the Law Enforcement Academy at NWTC and graduated with a 4.0 average. He immediately was hired with the Brown County Sheriff's Office, started in corrections, and just a little over a year later was hired as a deputy sheriff with them. One of the things that struck me during the interview process with Adam was that he, although he was already in law enforcement, he so wants to help the public more, his desire was, how can I do that? And by joining our department, he is able to help the community, the citizens, not only in law enforcement, but in every need that they have, just like our public safety officers do behind you, police, fire, and EMS. So with that, please welcome Adam Van Meter to our department. So, I think we have a little badge painting. Come on up. Well done.
Good job.
Nice job. All right. I will now ask Chris, is she already coming down here? Yep. To read the oath.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations.
That I take this oath freely without any...
Mental reservations.
Mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or person of deviation.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Oh, well and faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the office of public safety officer.
Of the office of public safety officer.
For the village of Ashwabanon.
For the village of Ashwabanon.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
There you go. Come sign this. Adam. Come sign this.
Thanks, chief. Welcome, Adam. Okay. Written communications or announcements. I have a couple of announcements. First of all, I have appointed Jamie Ashenbrenner to the Bike and Pet Committee, but she is not, she is like 50 feet from the Ashwabanon boundary, so she cannot be a voting member. But I really welcome her comments and thoughts about the Bike and Pet Committee, so she will be a non-voting member of the committee. Jamie spoke when they did a present, the Bike and Pet Committee did a presentation. So I value her opinion because she struggles sometimes getting places. So that's number one. Number two, I think people got the email today about keeping October 14th for a possible village board meeting because of the redistricting that we have to do for the county. And I've sat through two of those redistricting meetings now, and they have to have their numbers in and the wards and everything by October 19th. So we're possibly going to have to have a board meeting on the October 14th. So hopefully, everybody can hold that open. Did you want to add, did you have anything else to add, Joel?
No, I think what we'll attempt to do is have it early in the evening. It'll be a light agenda. That'll be most likely the only agenda topic so that you can take that item up and be done. The only other item, just to note, is our December meeting schedule will be different than what typically is provided. So usually, we meet the fourth Tuesday of the month. That being between Christmas and New Year's, we're going to move that up to December 14th. So if you can just mark your calendar that we're going to meet that second Tuesday in December to avoid the holidays. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else have any announcements? Okay. Moving on. Number nine, action on the consent agenda, action on the operators' licenses, general fund financial reports, August year-to-date, budgeted expenditures, and department reports. Anybody have anything that they would like pulled from that agenda or I need a motion to approve?
I just had a question on Doug's report, the landfill agreement and an update, just to pull that, to ask a question on that.
Okay. So do we, we want to approve everything but pull the Public Works Department report about the landfill? Okay. I need a motion. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve everything but pull the landfill report. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Doug, the landfill report. Tracy.
My, the report was good. I just have one specific question. Did you talk at all or did Brown County talk at all about not collecting glass anymore? Because I've been hearing that a little bit with not having anywhere for it to go and some of the other issues with it.
Yeah, that's been a discussion topic probably over the past year. They're still evaluating it. At this point in time, they haven't made a final decision.
Okay.
But they didn't have, I sit on the commission or that waste board meeting, commission right now, and they haven't come forward with a final.
Okay. So 20, next year, we'll still be collecting glass or they'll still be collecting like they have in the past?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now I need a motion to approve that report also.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the landfill report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. There are no public hearings. Number 11. 11A, action on appeal of denied operator's license. That one is not, that one was pulled.
Destiny is not in attendance because she was transferred to another location in Green Bay and doesn't need the Ashwabanon operator license anymore.
Okay. So we don't do that one? Okay. So 11B, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Desiree Johnson.
I don't see Desiree in the audience, but attached is a letter from Desiree Johnson appealing her denied application for an operator license in the village. Denial was due to failure to disclose criminal history and is a habitual offender. Ms. Johnson works for Jackson Point Sitco at 2710 South Packerland Drive. Public Works and Protection Committee voted to deny.
Okay. Any thoughts, comments?
I've been, excuse me, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, I was on the Public Works and was one of the votes to deny, and I would uphold that and make a motion to deny the operator's license for Desiree Johnson.
Oh, a second. We have a motion and a second. Do you have a comment, Steve?
Yeah, I've been approached by some businesses in Ashwabanon to take a look at our requirements for the liquor licenses and the denials and the criteria because of the workforce shortages and that type of thing. And so I've been approached by some businesses in my district that maybe take a look at that because they're experiencing significant problems with hiring employees. And I know the intent of the, the scrutiny that we put into this, but at some point in time, things change and we are in a different environment now. I'm not advocating that we change. I'm just advocating that maybe we need to take a look at it, no more, no less.
So would you like to have staff look at the recommendations and the requirements for the denial process?
That, yeah, that's what kind of came my way via some businesses, yeah.
Steve, I've had the privilege of talking to a couple of people who own restaurants. It's funny that in the last few weeks, how the force has increased in the restaurant serving business. The one particular place I talked to, he's at full staff plus. He had hired a number of people and the number of people are still there, which was surprising. So I don't disagree with you, but I think it's on the rise where employment is becoming a little bit better, seeing we're not paying people to stay home.
The one thing I would say is, so we did recently look at our criteria within the last year, I would say. We did, we did look at it and kind of set some new guidelines. I do think as well, I've been on Public Works and I can make, like, if someone goes through the appeal process, yes, we do deny some, but we do also sometimes give the benefit of the doubt or allow a second chance. I think maybe what I would like to do, and it might have been prior to Jay, Tracy, being on the board, I don't remember, maybe it'd be worth providing them the criteria we are, the chief is using to start. And then maybe that's just a good start for all of us to kind of look at what the chief is using when he's reviewing licenses and then kind of open up the discussion from there.
And that sounds fine to me, too. I'll refresh myself as it relates to what's currently on the books and where you have been, but I just want...
And it might have been right about the time that all of you ended up on the board.
Yeah.
So it might have happened all at that same time.
This wasn't restaurants either, it was gas stations, just to let you know. But you don't need to put on a committee. I'll, I'll take a look at that and maybe I'll share that with Tracy and Jay at the same time and we'll, if we think it needs to go to committee, then we'll go to committee. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, no more, no less. When my constituents bring something to my attention, I try and bring it forward just for notation perspective.
Right. I understand, well, I shared Public Works for quite some time and there were a number of denials. You know, when, when you have people that have several drug convictions, I, I have an issue with providing them with an operator's license, too.
So would I.
Yeah.
There's, there's others that are maybe less offensive that maybe get into a gray area. I know supposedly it's supposed to be black and white, but what I see in the world is quite a bit of gray at points in time.
I would hate to see us soften our criteria when it comes to this because I think we're pretty fair on the appeal process. And it's always, to me, and I think the way we've handled the appeal process, I think it's pretty clear, we don't, it doesn't always come down to the type of offense. A lot of times, the people that come up here, they've, they've changed their lives and have led very productive lives after making mistakes years ago, and we've been encouraging them to keep moving forward. I've been very pleased with that. I think we've done a nice job with that. And in some cases, and I think just reading over this one a couple of days ago, there's certain people that maybe come forward and just haven't taken responsibility to what they've done in the past. And in this case, I'd be wary of issuing that license. I think we've done a good job of doing that.
And I'm not, I'm not being specific on these two. I'm being more general in nature, so just, you know, put that in perspective, no more, no less.
Yeah, but I know, I know where you're coming from. And there's a concern with, with your constituents, you've got to address it.
Correct.
You know, I think, I agree, Chris, we've been very fair with it. I think our chief has done a good job on making the regulations that should have been brought up in the past, I'll say that, too. But also, I think tonight, if those people would have showed up, I think there was probably one that may have had a good chance of getting approval on it. Also, sometimes being on the Public Works, chairing that, we bring it to the board to make the final decision on it. It's not that we're 100% against what's going on. I think bringing it to the board gives them another light of explaining themselves, so, and I think tonight would have been a good example of that, but I'll leave it as it is.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to deny the appeal for Desiree Johnson. Anymore discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C, action on Class A liquor license request for Bountiful Boards GB LLC, DBA Bountiful Boards GB.
Mary, I'm going to refuse myself from any discussion or votes, voting on this issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Ashley Grant, who is in the audience, owner of Bountiful Boards Green Bay LLC, doing business as Bountiful Boards Green Bay GB, is requesting a Class A liquor license. Bountiful Boards Green Bay is a licensed charcuterie and promisherie which supplies cheese, cured meats, and variety of accompaniments. Ms. Grant is looking to get a Class A license to be able to sell cork wine bottles along with allowing wine sampling. The booth will be locked when the business isn't open. All licensing and fee requirements have been met. Public Works and Protection Committee voted to deny.
Okay. I will ask Ashley to come up and state her case.
Say my name and everything.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ashley Grant, 1578 Fox Court.
Hold the mic up to your mouth, please.
Better.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, since the last time I was here, I took everyone's comments and I have researched getting a more secure location where I would keep the wine. I have confirmation and approval from the people I lease from inside of the market to acquire a beverage air security cage. It's fully lockable. It secures down into the ground itself. So at the end of every single night, when I was not there, it would be fully secured. There'd be no way anyone could get in or out of the cage. And then I also acquired a new POS system, which is going to allow me to hire someone, hopefully by the end of October, to come in and start offering more and more hours. I've already started opening up more hours during the week. I'm open six out of seven days a week right now, and I'm going to attempt to continue adding more hours as I go as well.
Okay. This was at Public Works. Does anybody have questions, comments?
Well, at the Public Works, it was basically a security problem on how it was handled after hours. It sounds like she has done something to correct that.
Chief.
I would like to see that inspected to make sure it is as, as she is saying, so I'm going to hold my thoughts for the moment.
Do you have, did you submit anything, Ashley, about that?
I, I have an image on my phone if you guys wanted to see it. It's a $1,000 purchase, so at this point, it's in my cart waiting for approval. And then once approved, I would bring it in, have it installed, and then that's where I would keep my wine.
I would have to say that we, I'm just thinking, we probably can't approve it without seeing what, without knowing that it's there. Am I correct, Tony?
Yes, I would say there needs to be some sort of specific drawing as far as where the lock cage is going to be, what the area is going to be defined as the premises, so that can be accurately described in granting the license. One of the key components is to make sure that the premises described is a specific definition, is depicted in an accurate manner. So for enforcement purposes, for public safety's considerations, as well as the clerk's office, in issuing a license, there needs to be a specifically defined area and how that's going to be secured prior to issuing or granting any license. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
All right. I'll cut, you wanted to say something, go ahead.
Is this something, instead of voting tonight, if she can provide us something for the next meeting?
I would have, I would assume it would have to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I think we should just push this.
Unfortunately, that means it's another month, but if, if you can get with Tony and Chris and see what has to be provided to us for us to be able to vote on it, and also for the chief to be able to look at it, you know, make sure that it falls into our category, I think that might be the best option because I kind of see where you're at about buying it, not buying it. But if we can have something or Tony, whatever Tony said in all of his, a lot of his legal talk.
We have to see where it's going to be placed, what the perimeter of the area is going to look like, because it still is an open space. That's what my personal issue is, it's an open space. So to know how it is.
Can I move to, I don't want to deny it. Can I do, just move to table it till the next meeting?
Yep.
Because we're not really denying it. We just need some proof.
If we table it, though, we don't, we can't discuss it anymore, so.
Can I, can I ask a question before we table? Is there a way to allow the license but not allow samples?
No.
No. So when the license is given, then they can have samples as well?
I would assume, I would assume so because that state statute says that they can sample, so.
Right.
And it's the same class, a Class A, you have the ability to sell intoxicating liquors as well, so it's not just restricted to wine only, even though that's the intent of the applicant is to only sell wine, the license can be used to sell off-premise intoxicating liquors as well. So just, and we can't restrict that as part of the license condition. It's a Class A license under the statutes, and so they are provided with the same provisions that statutes give all Class A licensees.
So can a license be given, or is there a different type of license that can be given to Ms. Grant that would allow her to sell wine only and not allow samples? No.
Okay.
Can she statewide, she wants to have samples?
Is that correct? Yeah, that I would, I would like to be able to give samples out in the shop. If not, then I would adjust, but that's the goal.
Right.
Because you have classes.
I'm sorry?
Because you want to have classes?
Yes, I do. I host different styles of classes, mozzarella-making classes and charcuterie-making classes and all sorts of things, and I'd love to be able to offer samples as part of them coming and taking the class and experiencing both the wine and the cheese together.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So now Gary.
I'll, I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to table the decision.
Oh, yeah, do a second, I made a motion.
Did he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table this item till next meeting. Or, excuse me, the meeting at the end of October.
Is that October 14th or?
No, it would be the 14th. It would be the 26th.
Okay.
October 26th. Okay. Motion and a second to table till October 26th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11D, consider, discuss, act on Merge LLC's request for assignment of TIF Developers' Performance Agreement for Mike McCarthy Way Parcels VA-54-2 and VA-55-2. Tony.
All right. In consideration of the upcoming closing with respect to transferring the villagers' CDA's property on Mike McCarthy Way to Merge for their development project, Merge has requested or has created a new LLC to carry out the terms or develop that property and project as part of the development agreement and the TIF agreement with the village that requires the consent of the village if they're going to assign the TIF agreement to this new LLC. So this agenda item is a request of the village for its consent to assign the TIF agreement between the village and Merge, to Merge's new LLC created for this project. So village staff has reviewed that and has no objections to that request.
Okay. Need a motion to approve?
I saw move to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the assignment of the TIF Developers' Performance Agreement for Parcels VA-54-2 and VA-55-2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11E, action on Resolution R 9-2-21 regarding proposed territory amendment number two for TID number five. Aaron.
Okay. The requested resolution is part of the statutory process to amend TID number five to include some additional territory.
to include some additional territory, to extend the TID to the Menards property primarily, to facilitate any kind of redevelopment in that area, if requested. This is strictly a territory amendment. It is meant to, again, just add the territory. There are no additional projects or expenditures planned at this time. The Plan Commission has recommended approval pending village board action. It will go to the Joint Review Board at the October 5th meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Can I ask the resolution that was placed on our table tonight, what are the changes in that compared to the one that we got by email? Is there any substantial changes in that?
I guess I wasn't aware of one that was handed out. It should've been submitted with the packet.
There was one with the packet, but we got one tonight that was, it says, attachment for item 11E, but I didn't know if there's any changes. I was trying to look at it quick, and it seemed like it was different from what we received.
The Resolution 9-1-21 wasn't in the packet. It hadn't gotten signed.
Oh, the one for Plan Commission?
So we signed it.
Okay.
And then I put it on the.
Okay, so the one for, that was just one for Plan Commission that they approved for reference. The one that you'd be looking at is the one that was in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Essentially, it just validates the process of going before the Planning Commission first, having an adopting resolution, and then subsequently coming to the village board. So it's added to your packet primarily because it wasn't prepared for the packet, but it just follows that same process.
So then we're approving the one that we already received, the 9-2-21?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody wanna make that motion?
Move to approve the adoption Resolution R 9-2-21, approving the territory amendment number two to TIF 5.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 9-2-21.
Under discussion?
Yep.
One question on the list of the parcels. I just had a question on parcel number 18. I believe it's the old Menards site. And I just was wondering that the value of the property, not the land, is $183,000 only, and for me, that seemed kinda low, so I didn't know if someone could explain that more, that, why that is so low?
That really is just the land value at this point. The improved value is negligible and actually is probably a negative on the property.
Okay, so the $3 million that's listed for the property, and then the 183 that's listed for the land, or for the, excuse me, the buildings on there, and just because they're in poor shape, or?
Correct, yep, those, they really have no redeeming value at all, from an assessment practice.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just demolition material?
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. 11F, Consider Discuss Act on Amendment Number One to Second-Amended and Restated Pledge and Security Agreement for KI Expansion Bonds and Resolution R 9-3-21, approving Amendment Number One. Tony, that's a lot of words.
Yes, all right. This agenda item is based upon a request by the City of Green Bay to amend a series of documents concerning the funding structure for the KI expansion. Essentially, their bonding documents were drafted in a way in which, now that the city is looking at refinancing those bonds, there needs to be some change in language to allow them to refinance and obtain savings, which will then benefit, really, all these surrounding communities and members of the Room Tax Commission, because they'll be able to save on interest, which will then be better for even the Room Tax Stabilization Fund. So with respect to that, the city has made this request of all the, of all the surrounding municipalities. DePere, for example, has already taken this up and approved it, as well as Brown County. And so this is just processing these additional documents and, as a party to them, to allow the city to refinance their KI expansion bonds.
Okay, I need a motion.
Tony, is this normal procedure for that?
Yes, it is. Our bond council has also looked at it and has no issues with it.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Amendment Number One to Second-Amended and Restated Pledge and Security Agreement and Resolution R 9-3-21.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to amend the Second-Amended and Restated Pledge and Security Agreement for KI Expansion Bonds and Resolution R 9-3-21. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11G, Review and Action Regarding Ordinance Number 09-2-21 With Respect to No-Parking Regulations. Doug Martin. Mr. Martin?
Yes, good evening. What this is in relation to is a procedural in nature, a cleanup of our no-parking regulations for our most recent developments, one being on, at Alden Station, all of the roadways going through Alden Station, updating the no-parking prohibitions on those streets. The next one is for Center Street. The no-parking designation is going to be extended. If you've been over by Cormier School, they have a new drop-off area that was constructed, so the no-parking designation needs to be extended past that driveway. And the third one is for Sand Acres Drive. This is where the new Highland Ridge development, where the new Highland Ridge Drive will tie into Sand Acres Drive. That'll be prohibiting parking on both sides of that intersection. Went through Public Works and Protection on September 7th, was approved to be forwarded to you for review and approval tonight.
Okay, any questions?
No questions. I'll prove to approve the ordinance number 09-2-21.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 09-2-21. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. 11H, Review and Action Regarding Ordinance Number 09-1-21 With Respect to Heavy Traffic Routes. Mr. Martin?
Similar thing here. There was some cleanup involved, just in some grammatical and spelling errors, but the main changes, if you remember, Fernando Drive and West Main Avenue changed jurisdictions a couple of years ago. So the designations for heavy truck traffic had to be updated within the ordinance. US 41 turned into I-41, so there's some minor changes there. And then with the Title Town development, the removal of a few of the streets that used to be in that area, and a couple changes along the Lombardi area access road. Again, this one also went before Public Works and Protection on September 7th, and it was approved to be brought forward to you tonight.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Move to approve this present.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance number 09-1-21. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 11I, Discussion and Action With Respect to Bike Lane Designation on Cormier Road, Ashland Avenue to Oneida Street. Mr. Martin?
This item before you tonight. If you remember, 2019 is when Cormier Road between Oneida and Ashland was reconstructed. Utilities were done in 2018, so it was roughly 2016, 2017, the village was going through the design process, having the design meetings, committee and board meetings, to discuss the ultimate layout of Cormier Road, how that was going to be reconstructed, what the design was going to look like. And at that point in time, going back a few years here, if you remember, the village received some SDP urban funding for the project. And that funding at that time had bike lane and sidewalk inclusion as part of the funding. And the village was deciding at that point in time if they wanted bike lanes and sidewalk in that stretch. If you remember, Cormier at that time had sidewalk on the north side, but not on the south. There were different options that were brought forward, because there were some concerns from some of the businesses. If you remember, some of the businesses had their parking right up against the roadway, so there was discussions as to where to place the sidewalk, if the village wanted to have a purchase right-of-way to put sidewalk and have a terrace area, or butt the sidewalk right up against the road. Numerous discussions on it, and ultimately, as you see it out there today, is what was decided upon for design at that time. One of the items that was held off on it was the demarcation of the bike lanes themselves. The bike lanes were put in, the line was put in, but the village board at that time requested that the demarcations not go in. So, coming back before you tonight, a request was made this spring to have the demarcations or the bike lane symbols put in the lanes, so in reviewing with administration and with staff, thought the best thing would be to bring it back to village board for that approval before doing so.
I remember these meetings. There was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of comments that I got from residents. They wondered why we did such a strange job, that we partially tore up Cormier, and then we filled it in with some asphalt, and then we were maybe gonna pave it the next year, and I said, "It's all because of the urban money that we got for the SDP grants." There was discussion at that time that the bike lanes, although they put the line in, they didn't put the symbol in, but those bike lanes don't really go anywhere. That was brought up. I don't know if there's plans to.
Sorry.
Did you wanna say something, Tracy?
Go ahead.
So I don't know if there's plans to put bike lanes in other spots on Cormier. There is already, there's no parking on Cormier, so you, you know, when you have a bike lane with the symbol in them, it doesn't, you can't park there, but there's already no parking on there, so.
In the stretch of Cormier that we're talking about, between Ashland and Oneida, there is no parking at this time, so everything is in place for it.
Correct.
I think that was predominantly one of our concerns administratively, to make sure that we got board consent before moving forward with this. Cormier, the stretch that is being under consideration tonight, obviously has no impacts to it from a parking standard. However, in the future, if we continue to designate routes and bike lanes, they could have impacts to parking. So we just wanna make sure that the board is aware of that consideration and takes that into, into its consideration as it makes those determinations. Adding the stenciling, obviously, is going to provide some education and encouragement for the general public, recognizing that a bike lane is there and it's designated specifically for that purpose, whereas just a standard delineated outside shoulder may or may not provide that. One could argue, obviously, experienced cyclists, they know that the space is available and they're going to use it, but for the less experienced cyclists, that's a good demarcation indicating that that is what the intended purpose of that wide outside shoulder is. So again, we just wanted to make sure that if the board is desiring to move forward with that, then we're capable of accomplishing that task and providing that level of service for that stretch, knowing that it could have a ripple effect, both positively, depending on how you look at it, and negatively, depending on how you look at it. My experience in the past communities, it depends on the location. Bike lanes can be a very positive thing, that are very well and welcomed by the community, but they can also pose a lot of challenges, in particular in specific neighborhoods where parking is a premium, especially in older neighborhoods where maybe you have single-car garages, narrow driveways, things of that nature. So just wanna be cognizant of the fact that our community might desire a certain level of service, and we wanted to make sure you, as the elected officials, give us that direction.
So what you're really asking for is to put the symbol of a bike lane in there. The lanes are there already, and the people are well aware of that, so you just wanna put the symbols in there. Am I correct? Is that as simple as what we're explaining it?
It's as simple as that.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I don't see a problem. Get the damn thing done and move on.
I think Joel hit it on the head. One of the values of putting the bike stencils in there is education, not only for bicyclists, but for motorists as well. It lets everybody know how to use the road and how to share the road. It also helps our law enforcement officers to enforce laws, to make it safer for people to bike in our community. Hanson Road, for many, many years, had a bike lane only from Oneida to Ashland, and it's a heavily-used area. It finally was connected. Now there's a bike lane all the way up and over the hill, going to the west. So you can't put a trail everywhere. You can start doing pieces and then add on to them. So Cormier, putting this section in, designate it properly. Our state statutes require, for it to be a true bike lane, it has to have that designation and a stencil, or it has to be signed. So the village board in 2016 did vote for a bike lane, and I know there was a lot of discussion on it. But like Gary said, it's, it's not that big of a deal, and it's a huge thing for the users of that roadway, motorists and bicyclists alike. Now just make it safer for everybody.
Is there, is the bike and ped, are you looking at kinda what's the future, where are we going? Because like you said, they can be added on to. I'd just be interested to know, is there kinda planning that's going on to kinda say, "Okay, well, here's where we can go, and here's what we can do, and here's..." Because we have a lot of different trails and that within the village, and they all aren't connected. In my mind, it sure would be nice if we could get some planning, because we aren't gonna be able to do it all one time, to be able to start to connect these, whether it be bike lanes, whether it be hiking, whether it be walking, what it is, to start to kinda bring that all together. I'm just curious, is that being looked at in that committee?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, you know, that's a key thing. The thing with Cormier, one thing you have to remember, that is one of the few east-west roads that can go straight through our community. The other one is Hanson. And bicyclists would probably prefer to ride on quiet residential streets, but like a motor vehicle driver, they may wanna get to Kmart, or no, Kmart, they wanna get to Walgreens, or they may wanna get to a different thing, along Cormier. So then they're charged with taking that route, because they wanna get there. You know, Cormier right now, to the west, is very bikeable, because of the visually near lanes there. And then as you get further to the east, it's great when you come down that hill, and all of a sudden you have bike lanes. And then you get to Ashland, and all you have is like maybe a two-block stretch. Again, that is very user-friendly. It's a residential area. And then you get to our only north-south road in the Village of Ashwabana that has bike lanes, Broadway. So it's a key connection, and it's just, it's just an easy thing to do, and it'll promote more people riding, and more people riding safely. With that arrow in there, a lot of bicyclists sometimes ride against traffic, which is one of the greatest perils to them. They're not seen and they get hit, so it also encourages them to use it and use it correctly.
Yeah, my question wasn't so much around doing that. It's more, are we doing any comprehensive planning moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, the bike ped committee has a plan, and it addresses a lot of those types of things in there.
We're getting a lot more development, too, in this core area here, so you've got more residential people living in multifamily and that type of thing, and I think this makes a lot of sense, and it basically straightens out a project that's been half-done and finishes it, so I'd be in favor of it.
So I will go ahead and make a motion
There you go.
to approve the bike lane designation on Cormier Road from Ashland to Oneida Street. Is that enough?
About to place bicycle stencils?
Yeah, to place bicycle stencils and approve the bike lane designation on Cormier Road.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bike lane designation on Cormier Road. Doug, you had a comment?
Only comment that I had, and I think I'm echoing a little bit what Joel said. As staff, when there's a decision made at the board level, and then a request comes in to amend or discuss an action the board previously made, staff will always bring that back forward for discussion. So you're correct. It is an easy, it's a quick and easy discussion, but it was a decision made by a previous board. And changing that or amending to it will come back to board for approval. That's why you see it here tonight. Strictly just procedural nature, but it's going to come back, no matter what it is. It doesn't have to be a bike lane, it can be anything out there. If there was a decision made by village board and we're aware that that decision was made and we want to make a change to it or amend to it, we're gonna bring it back to you. Strictly, strictly just to speak to the reason why.
Thank you, Doug. Hey, everybody understands the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11 J, discussion and direction to village staff regarding sidewalks and new subdivision plaits. Aaron.
Okay, as discussed in the memo that I include in the packet for your consideration, as staff, we're just, we're looking for a direction at this point in time for future subdivision plaits within the village and the inclusion of sidewalk facilities. We're not looking for a decision at this, at tonight, as far as an ordinance amendment, anything like that. But really, this is just direction as far as what is the board looking for moving forward for sidewalk facilities. And the reason we ask is when developers come to me and say, you know, "I would like to develop this property. What improvements are necessary to be made?" I lay out what currently is required under our subdivision ordinance. Sidewalks are not currently in there. But based upon the discussion at Highland Ridge and also the Three Putt Meadows, there certainly was, seemed like a desire from the board to include some pedestrian facilities in there. Based upon my experience, what I've found is going on a, I guess on an ad hoc basis or kind of, well, we'll require them in this location and this subdivision and this location and this subdivision doesn't work out real well. It creates kind of a disjointed process. And as a planner, I'm certainly process driven. What I've found in other communities that I've worked that have dealt with this sidewalk issue, the process I typically recommend is to, first of all, just require sidewalks in all new subdivisions. And then you can make exceptions based upon topography, existing development, so on and so forth. But lay all that out actually in the subdivision code so that it's very clear upfront both to staff so that when people come to us, I can say, "Here's what's required based upon the code." But also then to the development community, when they start developing their pro formas for what they need to install in terms of improvements and then also what they need to sell the lots for to make up that difference and make the subdivision pencil out for them. So I guess at this point, what I'd request is just that direction from the board. How would you like me to proceed? Should we take a look at amending the ordinance to include sidewalks? And also then take a look at kind of peripherally, how does that then impact our street widths and so on and so forth? So they would kind of go hand in hand. So yes, at this point, it's really just that direction I'm looking for. And then I'd bring something back for ordinance to probably bike and ped first, plan commission and village board.
The one quick item that I'll add that's included in Aaron's memorandum is that obviously there's been plenty of effort made over the past five to 10 years in developing a comprehensive plan, a bicycle pedestrian plan. We're obviously working through a strategic planning effort that identifies and kind of consolidates these concepts and notions that we are going to be an accessible community for all multi modes of transportation, whether it's pedestrians and bicyclists. And where it gets a little disjointed is obviously within the code itself. So we have these plans that state what our vision is and how we want to implement them with recommended policy. But then the code has that exception and that kind of dichotomy creates conflict for us as staff to then administer that with development as it comes in. And it certainly creates conflict for the developers too, because now all of a sudden they have an additional requirement. Again, we're, from a staff perspective, we're supportive of whatever direction the board would like to take. But we just want to create some more clarity as it relates to how our code is written for new development in relation to our existing plans and vision for the overall community. So that's really kind of the basis behind this is when we had that prior conversation with Highland Ridge, quite honestly, it was a little bit all over the place, right? We started with no additional infrastructure requirements, went to recommending accommodation sidewalks on all streets and then it ended up with a trail on the main kind of collector's street through the subdivision. So that, again, that creates some of the challenges for us as staff and the developers. So ideally, we just would like some clarity and direction from the board as it pertains to that subject.
For me, just kind of generally speaking, or I don't have any real probably clarity for you guys, but just in generalizations, I definitely understand it's important for us to make it an easier process, a more of a seamless process for developers, especially after what we've gone through lately. But I have, the other side of it, I have a hard time giving up the ability for the board or the committees to be able to adjust on the fly the other way, unless there's a way we can do that and make that process as easy on this side of it too. I don't know if that makes sense.
Is this something, so right now we don't have it in, you know, like you don't have the direction. What, and this is more just a question. Would developers mind as much if it, let's say it is part of our requirement? So they come into it knowing that, okay, yep, I have to plan for sidewalks or, you know, et cetera. And then we have the ability to back off if we choose to, you know?
That's what I'm saying.
Only what we ended up doing with Highland Ridge or something kind of planned for the most. But that's, you know, if a developer comes in, that's what they would have. But then, hey, just know they might decide you can pull back versus adding cost, we'd be pulling back cost. Is that some type of, how would the developers look at that?
Sure, and I think I can address probably both those questions. It certainly is easier on the front end for a developer to come in with a higher cost and come down than it is in the back end to have a lower cost and have to add cost at the last minute. Because they developed their pro formas before they even bring the plat through to the village board. So it certainly is. And then Chris, your point, the way I typically write these is that there is some wiggle room in there for things such as existing development, environmental constraints, grade issues, so on and so forth. It might be a situation where, you know what, it just doesn't make sense. But it is much easier to pull back than it is to add on.
Yeah, there's a part of me that says it's good to have it up front. And you know, if a developer comes to us and says, you know, "We're making this subdivision or we're looking at this." But you know, we see in your priorities or your requirements, you have sidewalks, but you know, "I feasibly can't do this, this and this, this is what I'm coming forward to you with, et cetera." You know, at least they're thinking about it at the forefront and then again, they might have to pull it back. Or if they do think about it and come to us and say, "Financially, this isn't gonna fly, but I can put it on six streets." Or you know, I don't know, that they can put it on main thoroughways or something. At least they're coming forward with it at the forefront.
I guess I would shy away from the financial side of things just because that's always going to be an issue and that will always kind of lean on that. That's why I look at more the physical constraints of the development. So again, if there's wetlands, existing development, whatever it is. But again, the financial side of it, that's always going to be an issue. So it's always kind of say, "Oh wait, I can't because this is a financial burden on me." Well, okay, that kind of defeats the purpose of having that requirement in there.
Okay.
You know, this village has been known for not having a lot of sidewalks. Basically, the sidewalks we do have are for school purposes. This village is probably, is developed as it's going to be other than some parcels of land that may come up for development. Like Alden Station is one over, they bought a golf course, they put in a subdivision there, you know. It's funny, we developed this village this far, this many years, and now the subject comes up. It's not that I'm against sidewalks, but we're known not to have them other than when they're needed in safe areas and to get the kids to school in a safe manner. I understand what you two people just said, but I personally think it should be taken on a development project per project. I don't see a lot of conversation needed in this, other than to get some language to keep it open so that the developer knows there's a possibility. It might need sidewalks or it might not need sidewalks. You know, once that's determined, he can set his course then.
I think one of the things that Aaron is asking for and maybe staff as well is some clarification to this. It's too open right now. Our plans are saying one thing and our ordinances are saying something different. So they're just trying to get a feel for what our culture is gonna be or how we want to proceed with this. And this is not unusual. And I know Gary, this community has never had them for a long, long time, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have them. And things have changed. I mean, there's a lot more motor vehicles, they're going a lot faster, all of that stuff that you hear from me about 10 times. So I think it's just important for clarity for our staff and to set some parameters for the developers coming in. This is not unique in this area. I think almost every community and maybe Aaron can answer this, does require sidewalks on both sides of their roads in new development. In this area, there may be, if you could clarify that, maybe I'm wrong.
Most of the metro communities do. But again, it's a mixed bag, quite honestly. DePere and Howard certainly do require them on both sides of new subdivisions. Those are the two I know for sure off the top of my head. I'd have to research on the rest of them.
Yeah, I think Ledge View does as well, but it doesn't matter. But it's nothing unique to development, so it is a change. I agree with that. But I would make a motion to have staff put together an ordinance to require sidewalks on both sides of the roads in new subdivisions.
Just a thought from my perspective, and I think that connectivity is very important. And I think as Tracy has pointed out, things have changed. People are doing things maybe from a more healthy perspective, biking, walking.
Do we need a second on that motion? Somebody gonna second the motion before we continue discussing this?
I'll second it to continue discussion.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, continue the discussion.
And I think there would be, should be some emphasis on that interconnectivity so that people can move from one area of the community to another. I don't necessarily agree with sidewalks, but there should be an emphasis that the developer should take a look at in multi-use trails, sidewalks, visually narrowed roadways, right in the roadway itself, bike paths, whatever the case may be. But I think we need more interconnectivity and we should pass that on to the developers that that's what we're looking here in Ashwabanam. And you know, I remember way back when, when, I remember a lot of these old way back when things. But Joe Layden suggested a visually narrowed roadway and I thought, huh, sure. But it actually has worked out well. And I think there's more than one way to skin that proverbial cat. And so I think some emphasis to developers to think out of the box with sidewalks, with multi-use trails, with whatever else there to make, to have a greater level of connectivity where people can get out and walk and bike and be healthier. In today's world, the healthier you are, the better your chances are for longevity. So bottom line is, I think we need something to provide some direction to developers. And I don't have the absolute answer. Maybe someone, maybe collectively the board does. But and as Chris has pointed out, the flexibility is something that I don't think that one size fits all here, just like you thought on that, Chris.
Well, that's where I, where I stand on it right now is I, I don't know if you can give me this answer or clarify it a little bit more for me, Aaron or anybody, is how easy or how flexible will this be for us? You know, the way we're going now, we're saying, we're bringing the developer in and after he's got his costs and everything, we're saying, "Well, now you gotta do this." Flip that over and now we're proposing to say, possibly proposing to say, "Well, you've got all this, those are your costs, now we want to take some of that out." Is it gonna be the same process?
Yes, the process is still the same. It's just the difference is, it'd be written in the code, these are the required improvements. And then I guess as far as, you know, how we write it in for flexibility in there, that would just take some code writing and some ability to write that in there somehow. We'd work with Tony and Joel, Doug and Steve on that and try to figure something out.
Okay, so our flexibility and our ability to be able to do what we need to do or want to do as a board remains about the same, about equal.
Correct.
Okay.
And so for the code, so this is just what we provide to developers?
So the code is the basis upon which they develop their pro forma and their subdivision, everything else.
Gotcha.
So that's the basis that they operate from. And of course, then that is our code. But within the code, you can provide certain flexibility. But again, it's written into the code so that it's even playing field for everyone.
Okay.
And ultimately, it establishes the specifications and requirements for development. So the code, the code is what we have the ability to stand on, the leg, if you will, to stand on as it relates to what specifications are going to be used in designing the infrastructure and improvements that will ultimately be dedicated to the public.
Okay. So my question is, being the old person here, we were never known as a, as a community that had sidewalks. And we have never, our boards previously did not want to add sidewalks because to get sidewalks in our community, we agreed to plow them for the residents that they went in front of because they were safe routes to school. So my question, I don't have a problem putting into code for new development, but how flexible is Tracy's motion of require sidewalks on both sides of the street? How flexible is that? That's my concern. Because I don't know that, I don't want a developer to work with staff, and this has happened, you know, work with staff. We get a plan developed and then they end up being on the floor of the board here and negotiating.
I think... I really want to take this back one step because it really goes back to what I said before. What is our village's comprehensive plan for pedestrians, bicyclists? We're trying to make a decision on plots of land, but what's the overall plan? We should have an overall plan as to where we're gonna go with our bike paths, where we're gonna go with our trails. Once we have that plan, then when you have a subdivision that's bumping up to it, how does that interact with it? How should you connect it? Don't make a blanket, "I'm gonna put sidewalks on both sides of the street." Why? What's the purpose of it?
But I think we have those plans, Jay. Bike and ped, bike and ped have a plan, we have a comprehensive plan.
And why is this not part of that discussion?
Because it was never in the ordinance form to require sidewalks and new subdivisions.
No, you're missing my point. We need to look at the traffic plan as to how people are gonna move around with the new one. Not just flat out, "We're gonna put in sidewalks." No, we need to understand how are people, Tracy was talking about before. You've got east-west roads going through here, you've got north-south roads going through here. Now we have this subdivision way out here. How does that fit into the traffic patterns and everything that we're gonna do from a bike and a ped perspective? And then how do you connect them? With what? With sidewalks or is it with trails? Or how does this happen? And just making a blanket, "We're gonna put in sidewalks," to me is just taking a shotgun approach to it.
But this is for new development, Jay. We don't have a lot of new development.
I get that, but if that's the case, then we haven't had the sidewalks for so long. How are those new developments then gonna connect back into what we currently have?
Well, that's what, staff will work with the developer, but the developer has to know that that's what we require. Right now, they don't know that we require sidewalks. That's, it's not telling them where to put them.
It doesn't have to be a sidewalk though.
Correct.
That's my point.
Right. And I think, you know, what staff is really looking at is, it's gonna get to what you're saying, Jay. When they're meeting with the developer, it's important for them to understand kind of where the village board's coming in. If our ordinance are saying, "We would like..." of where the village board's coming in, if our ordinance are saying, we would like, we require sidewalks on two, on both sides of the road. And like Steve was saying, connectivity can be done through trails, can be cut-throughs, all of that stuff. And it's something that I think staff just wants to know, are you interested in looking at that when development comes in? This gives them a leg to stand on with the developer when he comes in, and right from the start, they're saying, we, we value, in our community, accommodations for bicyclists and pedestrians. So this is some of the ordinances, and it does, we require at this point sidewalks on both sides. It can be tweaked, like Erin said, depending on the development, where it is, what other connectivity is there. But it just gives a really good start for that developer, and there is a huge cost sometimes for those sidewalks going in, and they need to know that upfront. So it's more getting, I think, everybody on the same page, and our comprehensive plan already addresses that. Our bike, ped plan already addresses that we want to be a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly community. This will help us to be that.
So is this something that, I think we all are kind of in agreement, as much as it almost doesn't sound, we're all, we all want to go in the same direction. Is this that, yes, we do want to become interconnected, we want to become more friendly, but also keep in mind some other issues? Is this something that maybe you guys can take a stab at, writing something and bringing it to us? Maybe it says specifically sidewalks, maybe it doesn't, but I don't know that wordsmithing? You know, is this something that you guys have enough of our feel, that you can take a stab at something and bring it forward for further discussion?
So two quick things, to answer your question quickly, yes, I think we could. With the strict application of the motion, however, I think we'd want to advise you to kind of amend the motion to, to be more pointed to the fact that you desire staff to draft an amendment to the code that provides a couple of different options for your consideration and review as it pertains to the inclusion of bike, ped accommodations in new development. And so that's essentially what, what I'm hearing, is that you want a couple of different options to be presented to you. With that in mind, we want to be a bit more explicit as it relates to the requirements of these accommodations in new development, but yet you still want to have your own discretion and your own prerogative in determining whether or not they actually occur. And right now, it, there is a disconnect, but we will present a couple, two, three options to have you take into consideration as possible amendments at a future meeting, if that's agreeable.
I like that. Do you want to amend your motion?
Okay, I will amend my motion, that ask staff to put together an ordinance that we can review, a couple of them that will allow for more bicycle and pedestrian accommodations in new subdivisions, and bring it back to the committees and back to village board for their approval and final approval, if that's the way it goes.
And that's fine with my second as well.
Okay, does that give better direction? Okay, does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
11K, Consider/Discuss Act COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan Amendment: Emergency Sick Leave.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. In your packet is our current COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan. It has a proposed drafted amendment to a section related to emergency sick leave for the purposes of COVID. If you recall, as part of the American Response Plan Act back in, I believe, February or March, the federal government provided an extension of an emergency sick leave usage for COVID-related purposes to employees for a variety of eligible uses. That provision under that federal mandate is set to expire on September 30th of this year. The proposed amendment that you have is directly related to the extension of that expiration to December 31st of 2021. And the primary reason for that proposed extension is that due to the continuation of the pandemic, we have a variety of employees that may be negatively impacted by quarantines and isolating requirements, primarily because of children related to daycare and school-type conditions that thus would require them to miss work to provide that childcare. Obviously, we still have risks related to isolating and quarantine requirements related to individuals who test positive, and so providing that extension would continue that benefit. As part of this continuation, the provision under the federal mandate allowed for up to 80 hours of available additional sick leave for these eligible uses. We would continue that provision and fund that effort through the provision of dollars from ARPA through the end of this year. It would not be an additional 80 hours, so I just want to make that clear, that as of January 1, everyone was eligible to have up to 80 hours of emergency leave time provided as part of that act. This would just continue that 80 hours, it does not add an additional 80 hours. So two examples, if an employee has used all 80 hours as of June 1, they would not get an additional 80 hours of additional sick leave for that purpose. They would still have job protection class status as it relates to the leave, but they would have to dip into one of their existing accrual banks, whether it's their regular sick leave, or their vacation, or compensatory time for that purpose. If an employee has not used their full 80 hours, maybe a partial allotment, or none at all, they would be then eligible to use up to that 80 hours until the end of December. We will, we don't know, you know, kind of the proliferation of this pandemic over the course of the next few months. Of course, this could be something we would like to look at again at the end of December, but we'll wait and see as to what our approach will be in a couple of months, based on what is happening around our area and country as it relates to this item. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
You know, just looking over this real quickly, you're just adding verbiage to comply with the new rules and regulations of what is already there, out there?
Something already exists, that something is that emergency sick leave, that is set to expire September 30th under federal mandate. We have the ability locally to extend that benefit, and this amendment would do that.
It would do that.
It would do that, correct.
We at work.
Go ahead.
I would say, we at work, we don't have the federal mandate, but we today just extended ours through December 31st as well, so totally see the reason for that. So I'll make a motion that we do extend the emergency sick leave for the federal mandate to December 31st, 2021, and to be reviewed closer to that date.
I'll second that. That makes a lot of sense. For employees, it's, in today's world with what we're facing, it makes sense.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the amended COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan to December 31st, 2021. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Thank you. 11L, Discussion on 2022 Budget Compensation and Human Resources Priorities. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. For the sake of time, I'll briefly go through these topics of conversation that we would like to have at a very high level. Obviously, we'll have a more in-depth conversation as the budgets get finalized for draft review and deliberation amongst the board. Some key budget drivers, however, that we wanted to have this high-level discussion for is related to primarily human resource-related needs. First and foremost, traditionally, what the village has done is budgeted for an increase to wages to support our employees as it relates to inflationary pressures. As part of this budget process, we've advised staff that we are going to initiate our budget discussion with a 3% increase to wages and compensation to our employees. That 3% is based on two factors. One, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue announced and certified their consumer price index for urban consumers at 3%. They did that about a week and a half ago, and that would be that 12-month period ending August 31st. And then anecdotally, and speaking with other area administrators, many of which are looking at a 3% increase to wages to match inflation as well. So that's length there. From a cost perspective, every half percent increase in wages based on 2021 wage figures is about roughly a $20,000 increase in spending to the general fund as a total. So it does have certainly a financial impact to the bottom line. From a human capital need standpoint, there are a number of discussions that occurred as part of our strategic planning effort, and so we've kind of given the direction to staff to just at least identify some key positions that may need to be deliberated as part of the budget process. There's certainly no guarantee that these positions will make it through the process, but we wanted to at least identify them and identify a cost associated with each. I do have a few corrections that I want to make to my memorandum on the floor here. The first would be in public safety. The chief is proposing a full-time directed enforcement officer that would be specific towards traffic enforcement. It's my understanding the department had an officer in this role before, but because of restructuring a number of years ago, that position had been moved and shifted. With the direction and feedback that we received as part of the strategic planning process, we recognize a desire to improve traffic enforcement throughout the community, so we've identified that. The correction under public safety is related to the fire inspector. The proposal right now in the budget is for a full-time fire inspector, and that's predominantly just based on workload and need. We have to provide two annual inspections to all commercial manufacturing properties throughout the village. Ultimately, because of COVID, there are a lot of limitations and scheduling issues and challenges as it related to conducting those fire inspections, and so we've found ourselves a little bit behind the eight ball, and so there's a proposal to have somebody help us in that effort. From a finance IT standpoint, another correction, as of right now, that the proposed budget includes a full-time media and communications specialist position. This is really more of an IT function than it is a finance function. Obviously, Jeremy is working the meeting right now, mastering the cameras and audio and all that good stuff. Well, Jeremy does a lot of stuff during the day as well, and so trying to provide some opportunity for relief for his schedule. This media and communications specialist would certainly assist us in any marketing efforts that we had identified, but certainly also helping coordinate meetings and IT AV and that type of need as well. And then in the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department, we have a current full-time park custodian, so looking at reclassification to a parks laborer position. That cost is obviously an increase in wage, but we already have the current full-time position, so it would not be an increase in benefit cost. Real quickly, WRS rates were released a couple of weeks ago, and we're finding that WRS is doing well financially, and so they are reducing to the tune of about a half a percent in the contribution rate for general employees, as well as protective service employees. What that equates to is really a quarter of a percent for us, because the employee is ultimately required for the other half, so that's a quarter percent for them as well. It should be noted in protective service that the duty disability contribution is also decreasing by about half. Although, the actual savings is pretty immaterial to the overall budget, just because we're dealing with a quarter of a percent. Health insurance premiums, a couple of quick things. Our health insurance program, being fully self-funded, has proven to be very financially beneficial to us. At first glance, in talking with our health insurance advisor, preliminary data is suggesting that our projected premiums should remain unchanged, which is great news. However, we're getting closer to that kind of threshold as it relates to premium forgiveness and the amount of months that get charged back to the departments. So certainly, next year, I think we certainly could manage a non-rate change on the premium, but it does have what would be kind of more of a longer-term impact over the years. So that, that'll be one item that we'll want to discuss, I think, in a little bit more detail. It should be noted that, at present, our employees, if they do not complete the health risk assessment and an annual physical, then they have to contribute 2.5% towards their monthly premium for the health insurance. And so each year, I think the board kind of discusses as to whether additional premium contributions should be considered. I put a note in here for every 2.5% increase in employee contribution. It's about a $40,000 savings on the, in expenditures. Again, ARPA tends to be kind of this elusive factor. We do have funding from the American Rescue Plan Act that has been deposited in our accounts. We do have cash available for that purpose, and we will certainly provide a little bit more input and thought into the ARPA as it relates to our annual operating budget. Primarily, we're looking at utilizing ARPA as a kind of a balance for revenue loss from the start of the pandemic, which will ultimately help us fund certain capital projects that had been planned previously that were canceled as a result of some of the pandemic's effects on our revenues. So we'll certainly have that input in the budget as well. Bear in mind that we will be preparing an annual report that will be submitted before the end of October as it relates to ARPA. I would presume that that report will be pretty simple, because we've spent $0 to date, but we do have to submit that by the end of the month, so you will certainly see that. So with that, I'll take any feedback that you have on any of those key areas tonight. Certainly, we'll have further discussion on these issues as it relates to the overall budget picture when the budget books are officially published and distributed to you for review.
One subject that I always bring up at budget time, code enforcement.
And I know Erin has a plan, and I will let Erin address that plan.
It's certainly something that's foremost in my mind, and I do have a plan in place moving forward. We do have our part-time code enforcement officer. He is intending to remain on staff next year yet. But for the 2023 budget, I am planning on bringing forth a full-time code enforcement officer who will also then work towards getting credentials in building inspection. That person would focus on code enforcement, but again, to kind of build the bench, provide some relief for our building inspectors, as well as start to take on some of those entry-level permit processing, things like that. So there's a plan in place for that. I believe 2023 is going to be the year that I'll bring that forward.
Erin, should we be looking at bringing him on towards the end of 2022, therefore putting something into this budget to get that person on board? That way, there can be a smoother transition?
You know, I always have mixed feelings on having someone on board who's in a position currently. They may learn good habits, they may learn bad habits. I guess I prefer to bring someone on fresh and hit the ground running January 1st, or 2nd, actually.
This action item talks about human resources, so how are we doing with our current HR needs and things like that?
At present, very well. I think actually the structure of having a contracted service support us in that endeavor has actually worked out pretty well versus in-house. And for that reason, it's provided some flexibility for the HR function. They are working two days per week in the office, and most of their kind of hands-on work can be accommodated within that, that two-day-a-week setup and schedule. And so much so to the point where we can, we're employing them to do some additional work for us, some additional studies, some interviews, some conversations with employees to improve upon employee relations and communication. And at present, from a budgetary standpoint, we're certainly well, well under budget year-to-date for that purpose. So it's, from my perspective, I think it's working very well.
And will we look at continuing that same structure and service going into 2022?
Correct.
Okay.
Are the employees taking advantage of this if they've got a grape beef or anything? Are they coming to them rather than the supervisors?
Well, I think we certainly encourage the employees to talk directly with their supervisor first. If they don't make any headway with their supervisor, then HR has certainly been open and available to have those conversations. So we try to establish kind of a chain of command, obviously. If it is confidential in nature, or maybe it's related directly to their supervisor, I think we've had very good utilization to date of our employees going to human resources. We've also found that our supervisory and leadership We've also found that our supervisory and leadership staff have utilized them just to confirm decision-making and supervisory decisions as it relates to maybe coaching, counseling, hiring decisions, kind of the full spectrum of HR-related issues. So again, from my perspective, I think it's been working very well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one last question. Actually, I'll save it for budget.
I just have a question relative to the budgets being put together. Where are we with that status? Do we have an idea where we are at relative to dollars over a 0% increase? Not that I would be advocating that in any fashion or format, but I know that it always comes down to the bottom dollar in the approval of the budget process, be it right or be it wrong, but we'll also look at special additions as necessary. You know, for example, I know that traffic enforcement officer is one that a lot of us are very interested in, but do we have a little bit of a ballpark of where we might be relative to a baseline?
I can, I'll introduce it, and Greg can get into the details. Part of the conversation, I think, will be important going into this budget process is the market adjustment as well. Certainly, all of the endeavors that were identified here, if we were to maintain our tax levy, not our rate, but our levy from 2021 into 2022, we would not be able to accommodate those additional endeavors, that we know for certain, because there just isn't sufficient expenditure cuts to accommodate the increases. However, if we maintain our rate, then most of these items should be able to be accommodated from that perspective. With that being said, we've had a shift in the assessed value in our community from commercial class to residential class just because of how the assessed value works out. So those are key components that I think the board will want to weigh into and have consideration as they adopt the budget. A tax levy increase will exacerbate or compound some of those challenges related to increased assessment costs. And so every community is a little different. This is my first budget here in Ashwabanon. Some communities are very focused on rate, and so the rate can stay static, and they're okay with how the levy plays out because of equalized value. Some communities are very focused on the levy because that ultimately determines how many tax dollars are being generated from the taxpayers. So I'll let Greg kind of go into that a little bit more.
Yeah, that's really the key. Right now, I'm just about done finalizing, rolling everything up, so everyone has submitted their budgets, and just kind of providing that summary of ultimately, what's your tax level need to be to accommodate all the requests? So everything's in, it's being rolled up, and we know there's the whole process where we'll start meeting with department heads. To give a number right now, is we've got to go through the ARPA calculation and then factor what projects can we potentially pull out to use those dollars for? That'll be helpful in this process. So it's really going to come down to where do you want to be as a board? If you want to stay at the tax rate, that would be, like Joel said, pretty much would cover everything we discussed. If you want to be at the levy, you can pretty much take every request and take it out. So it's going to be some blend in the middle, right? And so we have to go through that process of identifying what are the key priorities? What are the key projects? What are the key capital outlays that we want to perform? We've got to integrate, you know, the public safety study. We've got to integrate the building study that we did, and then we have to look at the ARPA and ensure that the funds that we want to spend can cover, hopefully cover some of our larger one-time costs. We've got some out there. You know, some of these building projects are one-time deals that if we can use ARPA funds for, that's great. That really helps our budget. You know, the cost of the body cameras and the car cameras, it's a big one-time cost that we could potentially knock out with ARPA funds. So we're exploring all those areas, and then hopefully, probably where we typically settle is somewhere in the middle, right? Try to provide some relief on the assessed value, but yet still manage our needs within the budget. So all these items are, each of those positions that have been, that were brought forth are things that have been in the hopper for years and ideas. These aren't just random thoughts for this year, and we know we've already got a plan for next year, so if we put off some of these even more, well, then they're just going to come back and create more pressing needs. So I'm not trying to give you a non-answer, but really, it ultimately comes down to where you feel comfortable with that levy. I mean, we're typically a levy community, or excuse me, we're a rate community, not a levy community typically. That's how we've been.
Yeah, and you've put it well. I mean, that's a blend. You don't want to focus on the tax rate. You don't want to focus on a tax levy, but it's going to be a blend of some sort that the community can, I'll use the term appreciate. So thank you.
I was just wondering if Rex or Doug have any personnel that you feel you need for next year, if you've thought of that at all, or where you guys are at with your departments?
I'll start off first, and Rex can jump in. A few years ago, when the discussions first started about developing the area southwest portion of the village, that's the last vacant land we have. Our refuse and recycling routes will be filled by that development. So as Phase 2, as Phase 3 of Highland Ridge start developing, start building, that's when we fill up that last route. And what that means is an additional person or persons and a garbage truck. That will not be happening in 2022, odds 2023, more than likely. So that would be the, that would be the time for that position. So when this was all being discussed, we thought it was going to be '22. That isn't the case. In '22, there's still going to be construction happening. There's not going to be a lot of development, buildings on the ground, if you will, at that point in time. So it'll be '23.
Sorry, in Park and Recreation, Tracy, I think the biggest thing for me is the recruitment of our seasonal staff. Where we're missing our help and missing our labor is just the general job pool. We've got seasonal park and forestry maintenance positions that have been short-staffed the whole year. Very few people are applying for those part-time jobs, as well as even the summer jobs, where we used to have, you know, 20, 30 high school kids applying for park maintenance. We're barely able to fill them on a one-for-one basis now. Even with some of our instructors for different individual classes, we're having to either push classes or cancel them because we don't have anybody to teach them anymore. It's very hard to get those part-timers, whether it be in maintenance or whether it be in recreation activities. That's where I'm seeing the biggest challenge. Our village manager, Joel, had mentioned a little bit before regarding the reclassification of one of our park maintenance positions. I'll just say that one of the reasons for that reclassification, quite honestly, is so that I don't lose that person to other jobs that might be paying higher. That responsibility is very similar across the board. We'll get into that more during the budget deliberations, but if what has been given to the Park and Rec Department budgetary-wise for the positions that we have pegged, if I can fill those positions, we're fine for the time being. It's just trying to recruit people for those positions.
Rex, and I don't know how this goes. Is this something that maybe, because I know your pain very, very well, and I'm hiring different areas, but it's not fun right now. Is this something that we need to look at, potentially wage increases for some of those positions, or other things that we can potentially offer, education reimbursement, you know, things along those lines that maybe we can look at that in turn would probably provide or have expense going into budget to kind of better our recruitment package?
You know, I think it's something to look at. You know, other municipalities, I mean, we're not alone. I mean, I talk with my cohorts all around the Northeast Wisconsin area, and everyone's having the same challenges in terms of recruiting people for many different positions. You certainly know some of the issues Green Bay had. They have 35 staffed parks in their park program. They're able to fill 18 of them this year, barely half. So the other park programs didn't even happen. We're fortunate with our lifeguard group. We've got a good group of managers, and Melody, our supervisor, does a great job being a lifeguard training instructor, running people through the system. So, but we made it, but by the skin of our teeth, basically. It's something, wage increases, to take a look at. I'm kind of curious, you know, how some different things play out politically. You know, I'd probably say I want to wait another year before we do a whole-scale review of where we're at with everything. I'd say let's wait one more year before we figure out, you know, do we want to make additional changes to potentially compete with the other municipalities? You know, I don't want to get into that, you know, this is what you're paying, this is what we're paying. You know, everyone typically pays across the board fairly well, and I think we're right in there with the rest of them.
Okay. I was just curious, just because I know unfortunately, we're getting into the world where we unfortunately need to look at stealing people from other places and being the employer of choice.
Don't disagree with you.
Yeah, and just sometimes it's not necessarily wages, it's other factors that we might be able to do. So just something to keep, I was just curious about, so.
Well, Allison, just as an FYI, for like some of our lifeguarding, you know, in terms of, we're looking at, you know, trying to keep on par with Green Bay, because Green Bay is one of our biggest, I guess, competitors in the lifeguard arena. Just in terms of offering, before, we used to charge $125, $150 for a lifeguard training class. You get reimbursed for that now. If we get hired by, if you get hired by us and you work a certain amount of hours, you get that fee back. And so we're looking at and have tried to enact a couple of different things to make it easier for people to want to work for us.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just a couple miscellaneous ones. Is our money in the budget right now for the 150th celebration next year? Was that included? Okay. Other question I have is in regard to transit. Do we have the numbers for transit, I would assume, in there already? Any route changes or anything on that, or is that pretty standard?
I have it just status quo of what this year is, with probably just a minor inflationary increase. I don't know that we have any final numbers from Green Bay yet, so off the contact.
Another question on transit. Is there a possibility to put some shelters up on some of our transit stops? I talked to Patty, I was at a meeting with her, and transit can provide shelters, but evidently the village has to put the slabs in, and it's probably more of a challenge because obviously we have to have ADA accessible. So I don't know if that's something just to look into. I know the budget's strong, but just something to consider for next year's budget.
Ideally, if Patty could maybe make contact with Doug or myself, and we can kind of work through what those locations are of priority, we can figure that out.
Yeah, she said she'd be happy to do that, and she has a list and could give that to you as well. So I know the village has done that in the past, she said, with putting the slabs in, and then they put the shelters up on the slab.
The one thing that you have to remember, our routes changed. They took a lot of our long bus routes away, and so now we have micro-transit stops. So that challenges, it just presents a new issue as to where the people would go. I talked with Patty, actually, when Aaron and I went down there this summer, and about bus shelters too. Yep. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, 11L. Nope, we did that one. 11M, action on fingerprint fees. This is the item that was here once before, and then we put it off because there was discussion of should we charge the out-of-area non-residents more? And I talked to the chief about it, and it was suggested not to. So I'll let you handle it.
So just a couple of things regarding fingerprints. I guess I would ask the board what they want to do regarding residents. So if we decide that we're going to charge residents one fee and non-residents another, just keep in mind that that puts a little more work on our staff, because now we have to try to identify where they reside. They're going to come to the window, and they're going to have this information to get fingerprints, and what are we going to use to verify what their actual address is? Are we just going to take their word? Are we going to use the address on their license, which may or may not be correct in DOT? Are we going to require them to bring a current piece of mail? So when in discussion with our staff, they would prefer not to have to go through those steps and be able to distinguish between the two. So also keep in mind, the fee of $25 for citizen-requested prints probably still doesn't cover our cost, so it's a nominal fee. The court-ordered prints, the reason why those are a little bit higher at $40, there's just more involved with court-ordered prints, so it requires a little more time and dedication and documentation on our part. So that's the understanding that was brought forth, and there's some concern about that with residents and non-residents. I'm happy to make adjustments if you'd like, but it's going to require additional work from our staff to do that.
You mentioned that the $25 doesn't cover our costs. What, is it a minimal amount that would, if we do $30, we break even?
Yeah, well, you know, it's really staff time and materials that it covers, along with the fee for, obviously, we're writing for a grant for the fingerprint machine, but we also have to keep that running. We also have to do the Badger Net Connection, which is a over $600 fee every year that we have to cover as well. So those fees are what continue to increase for us, and that's why the request for increasing in the fingerprint fees themselves.
Is it absolutely crazy to just have one fee, whether it's citizen-requested or court-ordered, just one flat fee? Is that, is that like non-heard of, or just 40 bucks?
Yeah, it's not typical to do that. There is typically a difference between the two, just because of what is involved, but you know, that's certainly something we can, you know, look into as well.
I don't really, I was just curious.
Chief, why can't you have a person bring in three forms of identification? Driver's license, WPS bill, whatever the third one might be? If they all verify the same, they're good to go.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, but as I think about this process and our staff as well, that's not necessarily going to happen. They're going to look at the website and see what's required, may or may not look at it, but they're going to come in, they're going to be required by their employer to get fingerprint cards, and then they're going to come to the window, and then we're going to ask for documentation, and they're not going to have it. They're going to have their driver's license, and that's about it. So now we're going to have to say, okay, what, do we want to send them home? They got to come back. How do we want to do that? And what are we going to use to verify their address with? And then, you know, yes, if they have a bill, and it's a current bill, we can certainly do that, but again, we're requiring staff to do that, and their staff is also going to have to take a look at, okay, is this actually in Ashwabanon? They're going to look at the boundaries, because as you know, a lot of people's addresses say Green Bay. Well, where is that exactly? So we'll have to look at that as well.
Rex, how do you handle that at Park and Rec right now? Because you have resident and non-resident that you charge, correct?
We do have separate fees for some of our programs, and those addresses are actually entered into RUC Track where it comes up of where they are.
So maybe with safety, it's more of a hassle and more work for you to, for us to do the non-resident and resident, and the additional funds are really not worth it because the additional time that you will spend doing it.
Correct. Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to increase resident-requested prints to $25 and court-ordered prints to $40, but not have a differentiation between Ashwabanon resident, the same fee for all, whether you're a resident or not. So 25 and 40.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to have the fees at 25 and 40. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11N, Halloween trick-or-treat hours. Chief?
I was asked to bring this forward. Apologize for that. This is staying consistent with the past practice and also the communities surrounding us. We want to make sure our hours are the same, so we don't have any conflicts in that regard. So trick-or-treating on the 30th of first from 4:00 to 7:00 PM is what's recommended.
Thank you. Okay, number 12, items for next agenda. I'm assuming that we will have the Bonifat boards. I'm assuming that we will have the Bonifat Board's, I'm sure she'll get us. If you have anything else, just give a call to the office, we'll get it on the agenda. Number 13, closed-session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent 1, parent G, to confer with legal counsel concerning former Ashwabanon Public Safety Officer Scott Schmitzler's litigation in which it is currently involved. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent 1, parent E, to consider-discuss act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding collective bargaining negotiations with Ashwabanon Public Safety Association, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent 1, parent C, to consider-discuss act on the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, including Ashwabanon Public Safety Association, over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may thereafter reconvene an open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Voice vote.
President Kradowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Kobaki?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Bukey?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.